I don't know where Mr. Dorr is.
The mic just have to go. He's not gonna... When he hears that, he'll come running.
Should I just go ahead?
I just want to give you a heads up there. Eighteen speakers signed up so far. I just want to give you a heads up.
All right. Eighteen people to speak to us. Going to go ahead because he's...
Abby, are we ready? Welcome to tonight's meeting of April 14th, 2025. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the Westminster City Council Meeting of April 14th, 2025. We appreciate your attendance and would like to remind everyone that our meetings are governed by the rules of decorum, which are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect during all meetings, including breaks and transitions. To ensure a welcoming and respectful environment, we kindly ask everyone to adhere to the following expectations: No attendee shall disrupt the meeting. Threats and intimidation are strictly prohibited. Audible expressions of support or opposition for a speaker are not allowed. Signs and placards are prohibited inside the chamber. All attendees must remain seated in the designated seats and refrain from occupying aisles or blocking doorways. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding as we work together to maintain a productive and respectful meeting. If you are here to speak during public comment, please sign up in the lobby. It closes at 7:15. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demott.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
That brings us to consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting for March 31st. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the March 31st, 2025 City Council Meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March 31st, 2025. Is there any further discussion or changes? All of those in favor say aye. Opposed? Now, on to our fun stuff. We have some wonderful young people here tonight to be recognized. I tried to tell as many of you as possible. We will have all the council members along this side. If you would start at the end and shake their hand as you come towards the end here, I will be in the center. Along the way, you will receive a certificate that's framed. And I will have you come over here and will start lining up for pictures because our photographer is here from the city. And we will take a big one when we're done. Parents, if you want pictures while your student is coming down the line or whatever, get up, get in place so you can have your pictures. It's okay. And this is a night to cherish and we just want to make it as family-friendly as possible. So you aren't disturbing anything if you get up to take a picture while your person is going through. Counsel, meet me down in the front. As we call the students... Is it on? Hello? As we call the students' name, please come up. Start with Counselor Demott and shake hands down the aisle. I will be here. And then I will ask you to come and form a lines here so that we can take an after picture, okay? Angela Angelica Faez. Haley Bass. Diamond Cruz. Ozna Fardin. Angelica Franco. Hadiya Haydari. Miles Heitland. Katie Killian. Johann Chikrinos. Hagan Vang. Vanora Von Linen. And Messiah Williams. All right. Miles, not here? Congratulations. And let's just make sure I didn't miss one. Miles Heitland? Okay, we'll make sure he gets it. Okay, Counsel, who else put this away? Counsel, where do you want our photographer? Where do you want us... Chris?
All right, can I get you guys to go half and half? So half of you on this side, half of you on the other. And get both of my rows. Everyone take one big step over this way. Perfect. Thank you, Counselor. And then everyone make sure you can see me. You guys are professionals. This looks so good. Yeah, parents, go get yourself on photos if you want them.
Now's a great time.
All right. Okay, ready. Everyone looking at me. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'm going to stand here a couple more seconds for the parents.
Some are still trying to get in line.
All right, parents. I'm going to give you five, four, three. Two and a half. Two. All right, congratulations, y'all.
All right. I am going to invite up anyone who may be here for the National Volunteer Week proclamation. If you can join me up front. Oh, all right. Got a lot of people. This is nice.
Wow, as you all can see, we have a lot of volunteers that help make the city the beautiful city that it is. And this is so important. Our volunteers do all sorts of things, everything from going out to our open space areas to helping serve on a board. So there are lots of different ways to participate in the city at all different ages. So you can go to our website, which is hopefully easy to find our volunteer opportunities. Okay, we'll start with the dog. I would just love, if you could just give your name and what you volunteer for. And I'm just going to pass the mic around if you don't mind. I know it's a lot of people, but we're going to start with the dog.
I'm Steve and this is Yukon. We are victim advocates with the Westminster Police Department. And we've just recently been okay to take part in the Pause to Read program for the libraries. And so this is Yukon.
Hi, my name is Hillary and I'm a tech tutor. I work at the Westminster Library.
Hi, my name is Lauren. This is my mom, Anna. And we volunteer for like special events like Westie Fest.
My name is Ellen Contreras and I volunteer with the fire department as well as the police department.
I'm Mike. I volunteer in point-in-time service.
I'm Linda Grabiel. I'm the president of the Westminster Historical Society and I also serve on the Historic Landmark Board. And I love dead people.
I am Martin Zelinski and I serve on the Elections Commission.
Harley Armstrong, Finance and the Archives.
My name is Dennis Emily and I participate in Open Space.
I'm Gary Bland. I volunteer every chance I can.
I'm Tammy Kramer. I'm one of the Westy Dog Park Guardians.
Yes.
I'm Leah and I volunteer at the College Hill Library.
Good evening. I'm Donna Johnson and I am a member of the City Council Inclusivity Board.
Jeanette Peters and I volunteer with Parks and Rec.
I volunteer with my wife.
I'm Ian. I help with special events and I'm on the Westminster Police Citizens Academy. And you all should check into it.
Richard Baker. I volunteer guarding.
I'm Targo with the Guardians.
I am a snowbuster and I volunteer for special events like Westie Fest and Groot Fest.
I'm Neo and I volunteer as a tech tutor at the College Hill Library.
I'm Beth McBride. I'm with the Dog Park Guardians.
I'm Heather and I do special events.
Jeannie Jones, special events, police and fire.
Becky Emily with Open Space.
George Smith with the Historical Society, the History Center for 10 years now.
Kathy Gibbs, Speak English Program substitute.
I'm Travis, a book club leader at the College Hill Library.
As you can see, there's lots of different flavors. So you can pick your own. I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations. And whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference. And whereas during this week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service. And whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's problems. And whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million, I think half of them are in here, is a great treasure. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation. Now therefore, I, Nancy McNally, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 20th to the 26th, 2025 City of Westminster National Volunteer Week and urge my fellow citizens to volunteer in their respective communities. By volunteering and recognizing those who serve, we can come together to make a difference.
All right, guys. We're going to have to get a little creative here. That's a good problem to have. Steve, I can get you Yukon over on this side. I'm going to be standing up, shooting down from on high. So yeah, get as close to that brass railing as you can. I'm going to need everyone to scrunch in real nice and tight. We're all family here. If you're having trouble seeing over the person in front of you, maybe switch spots with them. I see a couple back here on the back row. Maybe switch if you can. I got to make sure I can see you through some of those shoulders here. Eye contact with me. Make sure I can see you, at least the camera can see you. Yukon, it'll be over soon, buddy, I promise. Steve, can I get you and Yukon just a little bit further over?
They should.
Well, I can. We'll see.
It'll be okay, buddy. Perfect. All right. Everyone looking at me right here. One, two, three. Thank you, volunteers.
For all those that came and have been recognized, it is that time where if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting, it is perfectly fine to exit right now. We won't be offended. The public comment portion is an opportunity for the public to speak with City Council. Each participant will have up to three minutes. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If you wish to speak about a public hearing tonight, please hold your comments until that item is called. Tonight, there are two public hearings. One on a preliminary development plan for amendment for Uplands filing three, Block One, Tract A, and Block Three, and one regarding cleanup amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. The city clerk has informed me that we have received no emails or voicemails today for the packet. And would you please call the first speaker? The first speaker is Erin Varner. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Counsel and Mayor and City staff. And thanks to all the volunteers and great to see all those students. Congratulations to them for all their hard work. My name is Erin Varner. I live at 8685. I live at 8685 Clay Street in Prospectors Point. Longtime resident there, longtime teacher at Crown Point Academy. I am on the board of directors of the Prospectors Point condominium association. I wanted to address parks in line of the recently approved Vision Plan, and thank the staff for their work on that, the city staff. And I will be referencing it a lot, referencing the LOS, or Level of Service, for parks lacking in southeast Westminster. Quoting the Vision Plan, nearly all of Westminster is located within a 10-mile, half-mile, I'm sorry, a 10-minute, half-mile walk of a park. And this references a map, Appendix D in the Vision Plan, which you will notice that Prospectors Point is not shaded. Prospectors Point has been in Westminster for 40 years. It has never been within a legal 10-minute walk of any Westminster or Highland Hills Park. Prospector Point has 400 units, and there are over 280 new units of affordable housing coming in right next door, approved by the city. Our community has lots of active residents and lots of dogs. Our school, which is expanding, also would benefit greatly from a park nearby, a safe place for our staff to walk on breaks or during their lunchtime. And it'd be a great opportunity for our students and their families to participate in recreation after school. Quoting the PRL Plan, historic Westminster in the southern area of the city, the southeast quadrant, is significantly lacking in parks and open space compared to the rest of the city. However, this area is home to two recreation centers and the Irving Street Library, affirming the location of these facilities as strategically placed to serve a disproportionately impacted community of Westminster. Prospectors Point is outside of the 10-minute walk of these facilities as well, continuing our disproportionately impacted community status. We are not in historic Westminster. We are historic adjacent, and have always been neglected due to the private land that surrounds, surrounded us. I am here to humbly ask the council and Parks, Recreation, and Libraries to make the park at 87th Place and Decatur a priority for southeast Westminster. Remember, please, the lack of service that existing city residents have been experiencing in your approved PRL Vision Plan, which objective 1.1 is to ensure equitable access to high-quality parks, facilities, trails, and natural areas for all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Keith Bowie. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Keith Owenel. I'm the executive director of Crown Point Academy. Get to work with AJ. Wanted to personally invite everyone on the City Council to our groundbreaking on May 6th at 4:30 for our new pre-kindergarten through second-grade facility. It'll be at the northeast corner of 86th and Federal Boulevard. Thank you, Mary McDally, for already sitting in RSVP. And the City Council has been a great partner to the school and this particular project. Comes here several times over the last few years. At every turn, the City Council was very supportive. And so I just wanted to say thank you, and I hope to see you all there. Have a great evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Stout. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, mayor and city council. My name's Cindy Stout. I'm here representing the Westie Dog Park Guardians. Even though you haven't heard from us for a while, we've been hard at work organizing our group for the future so we can continue to be responsible partners in city Westminster. I've handed out our 2024 annual report, and would like to go over just a few of the highlights with you. And I'll wait till it gets over there. On the first page in the advocacy section, the third bullet point. We were able to adopt the park through Westminster's Adopt a Street program. So that was exciting for us. We will be hosting a celebration of that designation on Saturday, May 17th of this year, and would love to see all of you stop by sometime during the morning. The mayor has graciously accepted our request to say a few words and cut a ribbon for us. We hosted several events last year. We will continue this year, including our first Guardian-sponsored pup party in September. Pup is a nice way to say pick-up poop. We had over 300 volunteers sign up to help clean up the park. Also, our first annual pause giving was held. We've got some really creative people on our group. The week before Thanksgiving, where the community donated over 3,000 pounds of pet food that was distributed to Fish of Westminster and Growing Home. Finally, on the backside of your handout, if you would turn it over, we did a full financial overview, including values of in-kind revenue for the year. As you can see, our volunteer hours were estimated at an astounding 6,742 hours. According to nonprofit estimation tables in Colorado, each hour is valued at $36.36. In total, the Guardians' in-kind volunteer hours were valued at over $243,000. Finally, I'd like to point out the third goal that we have on that last section for 2025. The reason we did the financial overview. We are currently researching fiscal sponsorship partners that would allow us to be an organization under an umbrella 501(c)(3) sponsor. This would allow us to begin receiving donations and grants to financially partner with city Westminster for park improvements and maintenance. We will keep you posted, and really appreciate the support we've received from City Council and the new Parks Director. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Miller. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, council members. My name is Brian Miller. Me and my family have been living in the ranch neighborhood since 2019. And the issue I'm bringing you tonight is the intersection of 119th Avenue and Zuni Street. This intersection has become a real problem for people in the neighborhood, myself included. Just recently, my mother-in-law and three-year-old got T-boned at the spot, taking it right onto Zuni. Fortunately, everyone's okay, but this has finally motivated me to do something about this. My wife and I did some research on the city website, and one thing that stuck out to us in one of the PDF documents was the chapter on roadways, in particular sight distances. And sight distance triangles, when taking a left onto a two-way street with a 25 mile-per-hour posted speed limit, you need a minimum clear line of sight of 280 feet. If you were to see this intersection when legally stopped at the stop sign on 119th, there's a fence and foliage blocking almost 100% of your view. It's not until you inch almost halfway out into the street when you can reasonably see further down the road. And it's still not anywhere close to 240 to 280 feet, thanks to a dangerous bend in the road. Sight distance triangles are described in the next section, and this part was relevant. Within the area of the triangle, there must be no wall, fence, sign, foliage, birmingham, or other structure which will obscure the driver's view of traffic approaching an intersection. Structures or berms within the sight distance triangle can extend no higher than 30 inches above the curb elevation, except for fire agents, utility poles, and traffic control devices. This intersection has a six-foot fence blocking almost the entire view when looking to the left, when sitting at the stop at 119th. Aside from the laws surrounding this, we have community support as evidence of the 125 signatures of the petition my wife started on change.org. Again, I have seen firsthand motorists disobeying or completely ignoring basic traffic laws, even when school buses are out and kids are crossing the street. This is a school bus pickup for Cotton Creek and some of the other local schools in the area. So my kid used to ride the bus, and on a number of occasions, I saw firsthand people just flying right through the intersection. So at a bare minimum, a speed bump would do wonders, and a four-way stop would be ideal. I've submitted all my findings, petition link, and video footage showing all pertinent angles of this intersection to councilmen. Obi, as the audience, sorry. Do so on a next-door post-recommended eye contact. Thanks again for your time and consideration as concerned.
Thank you. The next speaker is Janet Woluski. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you all. Good evening. My name is Janet Woluski, and I have been a homeowner at Cottonwood Villas for 26 years. I'm here tonight because I'm at my breaking point. Over the past two years, my home has become a place of fear, stress, and constant disruption due to ongoing crisis involving homelessness, drug use, trash, prostitution, theft, and even violence. We need action from the city. Homeless individuals have repeatedly occupied my building. I've witnessed someone camp out on the interior third-floor landing. And first, when he was there, he was holding a stick and a rock for his protection. Over that time, it became a baseball bat, and over that time, it became a 12-inch knife. I had no way to protect myself. I would come home, and he would be there. Tenants across the hall dragged up a filthy mattress from the trash. I witnessed it myself, put it into the unit, and then I ended up with bedbugs. It has now cost me over $5,000 to renovate, rip out my carpet, et cetera, to get rid of the bedbugs, and it's going to be ongoing. After they moved out, I developed a health issue, and that's an ongoing financial burden for me as well. The conditions are driving the property values down, increasing stress, and making it unsafe for me to even invite my grandchildren over. So they don't understand why they can't come stay at Grandma's house. I'm asking for... They're tired, and we're scared.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Polis. Welcome.
My name is David Polis. I too live at Cottonwood Villas across the street from Cracker Barrel on 120th. We have been struggling with drugs, selling, buying, and we also have been struggling with this humongous input of homeless. I want to thank the mayor for coming last Tuesday, supporting us. And I want to thank the police officers. We talked to many, including Officer Adams. They've been huge to us. So thank you, city. There are things that are happening here we cannot fix on our own. And this is not just a compassion problem. This is now a safety issue and a health issue. Two things that we need your help from. The sheriff's department sends those who come out of jail in Brighton. They give them free vouchers, and they take the bus, and they're dropped off wagon, bus stop, within two football fields of our condominium. Number two, there are some wonderful churches and individuals who give hotel vouchers to those people who are homeless, which can be good, especially in the wintertime. You can clean up, take a shower. But they don't give them out to Ritz-Carlton. They give them out to inexpensive motels. And some of the most inexpensive motels in Westminster are within 100 yards of us. So when they come out in the morning, they're right at our footsore. We need your help to have an ordinance, a law, or something, because we are doing everything we possibly can, but we can't overcome those things. You've heard Janet's story. We have many, many of those stories. We have 344 homeowners in 29 buildings, and if you spread them out, that would be a very large subdivision. It's affecting a lot of people. So for me, Cottonwood Villas is not only a community or a property. For me, it's my home. Will you help us?
Thank you. The next speaker is Samantha Kretzeder. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sammy Kretzeder. My partner Tony and I moved into a first-floor unit at Cottonwood Villas in November of 2021. While we were excited and grateful to have the privilege of owning the home, we slowly began to realize that the location of our new home came with some challenges that we have tried to coexist with up until last year. In early 2024, we brought our now 14-month-old daughter home, and we were suddenly living with the same heightened awareness that many parents experience while trying to keep their children safe. As such, we have installed three cameras on every side of our unit. These cameras allow the police to see some of what we experience, but they can only do so much. Since my daughter has been born, I have witnessed an unhoused person scaling my building and attempting to break into an upstairs neighbor's unit through their patio door. Most recently, we had another unhoused man loitering in our hallway. He was swaying and appeared to be talking to himself. The upstairs neighbor asked if he needed medical assistance, and when he didn't respond, she called the police. When the police arrived, he became verbally aggressive with my upstairs neighbor, and it took three officers to wrestle him to the ground. Most disturbing, our babysitter took our daughter for a walk in her stroller, and together, they came across a man who appeared to be high, lying on the ground with his pants around his knees.
It's okay. Take a deep breath.
He was exposing and pleasuring himself while they walked just a few feet away from him. By the time the police arrived, he was gone. Please understand that while I have compassion for the unhoused community, I am asking that you consider passing additional measures to help our family feel more safe in and around our home.
Thank you. The next speaker is Amanda Miller. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name is Amanda Miller, and I am the president of the Homeowners Association at Westminster Homes Townhome Community. And I am here today to ask for guidance, assistance, in getting a 630-foot fence built along the railroad right-of-way that faces our community. We have homes that face the railroad tracks with no fence. And in addition to the normal trains, recently, the gate that was just replaced on 80th has allowed for heavier trains to be coming through. So we're getting noisier trains and more dirt and debris kind of shot at the homes that are facing that area. So this section of homes currently lacks a visual and noise barrier to the railroad tracks. We're requesting this for equity concern as well. Very few other homes face a railroad track with only a street between them and no fence. The community impact is the lack of a barrier reduces the property value. It impacts the quality of life and raises safety concerns. And there was a recent project that was done along, that the city, I believe, helped complete, where there was some mitigation along the embankment, but the railroad has started using that as a driveway. And so it's ruining kind of the new parking, or the, I can't think of the words, I'm sorry, the curb. There's, what do you call it, erosion that is impacting the previous work done by the city. And there's also very large weeds that grow on that property that impacts the parking that the city doesn't seem to be responsible for, nor does the railroad. And so we're just looking to figure out a way to get a fence built. The apartment complex to the north of us on 80th has started a fence because they do own up to the property line of the railroad. And so it's kind of started, and so we only need 630 feet, and I would request assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Trujillo. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Linda Trujillo. I live on Wolf Street. I'm a resident of Westminster Homes. And I hope that what I'm saying at this point isn't so redundant to what Amanda just spoke. At Westminster Homes, we have 140 units. So we have a residence in each of those units. We are located east of Los Argos, in case you want to get that a little bit in your mind where we are. This is on Wolf Street, the intersection of 80th. It is a busy, busy, high-profile, short street. But we have traffic through there all of the time. When I first bought and moved there, our biggest problem seemed to be who's in charge of the weed removal on the embankment across the street. I called the city and was told, oh, the embankment belongs to the city, but anything above that is railroad. So the city dutifully sent out workers to take care of the weeds. And that was a great situation until COVID. After COVID, suddenly, the embankment didn't belong to the city anymore. I had evidently been given erroneous information. So then it became all railroad property. So the weeds overgrown was a big problem. But the city has great people who work for them and occasionally would show up and take care of that problem. But as time goes on, it has become a big problem this past summer. We only had that. The bigger problem, however, is the fact that we do face the railroad. I have looked all over Westminster. I do believe that we are the only neighborhood whose front yards, front windows, do look out over the railroad and the very trash, transient people, walkways that have been created through there. But as my friend noted, a few years ago, there was a joint project between the city and the railroad. The city evidently needed to install larger pipeline than was currently there. They did so across the street at the railroad property. The embankment that comes down is now completely eroded. Not only did they install new pipeline, but in doing so, brand-new curb, brand-new drainage, brand-new gutter. You cannot even see the curb now because of the erosion that has occurred. This was a terrible waste of taxpayer money because we're out there constantly digging through the mud to try to take care of the trash that washes down, the dirt that washes down, the fact that the weeds have not been mowed. And so they're holding trash and mud. The sidewalk that ends there ends in a big pile of mud. Again, invisible new curbing that has been driven over as the railroad now is using it as their entryway onto the property, up over the curb that we paid to have built. I know I'm out of town, but this is not a good situation. I am in support of the city considering helping us fence this. You run mostly on a platform of open space in Westminster. My open space in Westminster is not what we see in the Westy Magazine and not what you talk about when you're asking for our votes. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jim Fenimore.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, Jody. Just to give you guys a heads up, a while back, I was letting you know that there was an environmental encroachment on Elk Creek over on the east side of Federal on the Uplands Project where they put the storm drain in. They were in there this week, and so far, they went in there with the largest vacuum truck made and hauled out 12 loads of mud out of that creek. And still got ways to go. But we are getting some action on that, so that's a good thing. And also would like to compliment the city on the study session that you had up at the swimming center to where the community was able to come up and actually interact with council and staff. That's, I think that that's a true study session to where we can interact with one another. When you have your study sessions, I know it's important to where you can take and talk amongst one another. But where we can, with the community, excuse me, the community can actually interact with you, say something, and you guys react to us, or you might have questions for us, and we can interact. I think that was great. Keep that up. Hope there's some more of those. It's good for the community. Thirdly, the railroad tracks. I'm working on that still. Started working on it last year, as Jody well knows. I did bring it to you guys' attention to try to get the railroad to get in there, clean up that area from 72nd all the way up to Sheridan, which would take in that part of the tracks that these ladies were talking about. So maybe I can catch up with them later and get their names so we can get some more work done this spring or get some work done. They haven't even picked up a cigarette butt down there. Lastly, I've been able to interact with Eric, with Park Rec and Library. And, you know, he's been very open, very, very available. Some of the things that he's been doing as interim manager is actually been some very beneficial to the Park and Rec and Library District. I would hope that soon the city could, instead of having him interim, just make him the manager or whatever the technical name would be for that division. Because I think he's a great person, and he's really applied himself as the interim manager. So thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kara Thorson. Welcome.
Hello, city council. My name is Kara Thorson, and I want to share a story about a woman who purchased a puppy from a pet store. In 2021, Holly Delgado, Colorado resident, drove to a pet store called Pet City to purchase a puppy. She brought him home and named him Sammy. What she didn't know and what the store didn't tell her was that Sammy was born in a puppy mill in South Dakota. At three and a half pounds, he was shipped to Nebraska to be neutered and then trucked to Colorado to be sold. By the time he arrived at the store, he was already sick. But instead of receiving medical care, he was put on display in a glass enclosure, and he lingered there for weeks. When Holly took him home, she quickly realized something was wrong. He refused to eat, and she tried to feed him with a syringe, but his condition worsened, his belly swelled up. And just nine days after leaving the store, he died. Holly's story is not uncommon. So many people are deceived by pet stores, and the result is heartbreaking. In memory of Sammy, we refer to these types of ordinances as Sammy's Law. The stickers we wear bear his image. We wear this sticker to remember all the pets who suffer for pet store profits. All of the Colorado pet stores, like Pet City, Puppies &amp; Stuff, which used to be located in Westminster, Pet Ranch, Perfect Pets, they all source their animals from out-of-state, commercial breeding mills. These puppy mills and pet mills are located in rural communities like Wyoming, in Wyoming, South Dakota, Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, and there are many in Missouri. Their breeding mothers are all confined to cages, producing thousands of young animals to be shipped to Colorado. They are flooding our communities with sick pets. But many of our cities are fighting back. 23 cities in Colorado now have an ordinance, including Aurora, Aurora, Commerce City, Fort Collins. They've all taken action, like the ordinance you're going to consider tonight. The Denver City Council is currently drafting an ordinance to prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits in pet stores. And we're hoping that Denver passes that. These communities recognize the undeniable connection between pet stores and pet mills. And they decided that profit can never justify animal abuse. This ordinance is about prevention, to prevent these unethical pet sales. Let's ensure that no more puppies like Sammy will suffer. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Brian Sugioke. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Brian Sugioke, S-U-G-I-O-K-A. Most people get that wrong. I'm here tonight to speak in support of an ordinance outlawing the retail sale of animals in Westminster. It had been my understanding that perhaps such an ordinance had been drafted. It's now my understanding it has not yet been. But I am hopeful that will take place soon. And I'm speaking in support of that not only for the sake of animal welfare, but also to protect our community's consumers. When you walk into a pet store, it is easy to be drawn in by the idea of these cute baby animals and glass enclosures, and everything looks clean and neat. But behind that glass is a much darker reality, one that most consumers either never see or only learn about after the fact. Because the vast majority of animals that are sold in pet stores are sourced from commercial breeding operations, often known as mills. And puppy mills is the most common one, but there are cat mills, there are rabbit mills, there are bird mills, there are reptile mills. And these breeding mothers are caged for life. They're denied proper medical care. And they're forced to produce litter after litter until they become sick and die or are no longer capable of producing children or babies. Their babies are often weaned far too early, which compromises their immune systems and their long-term health. They're then packed into trucks and shipped long distances, often across the entire country, without adequate food, water, or ventilation. Many die. Many who survive arrive sick. And those who don't die or are too sick to be put on display are placed into pet store cages where they linger for weeks or months until they are potentially sold. They're deprived of exercise. They're deprived of vet care. They're deprived of socialization. Pets kept this way are far more likely to develop behavioral issues for completely understandable reasons. Many of these animals have underlying genetic disorders or contagious illnesses, such as distemper and parvo, diseases that can be fatal and expensive to treat. But despite all this, pet stores continue to assure customers that these animals are healthy. But when a family discovers their new pet is sick, the store often refuses to take responsibility. Refunds are denied, medical bills are not reimbursed. And in some cases, grieving families are offered a replacement pet. And I don't know if any of you have ever gone through the process of finding a pet, either for yourself or for your child. But it's usually a process. You look carefully. You find the one. You find the one that you want to be part of your life. And this is perhaps the main point of this, which is the notion of replacing animals suggests that pets are like commodities, that you can commoditize them in the same way you go to Walmart to buy a tube of tube-based. You go to the pet store to buy a pet. But the reality is, is that pets are not commodities. They're individual creatures. They need to be treated individually, or they get sick and die. And fundamentally, such an ordinance would not prohibit the sale of pets. It would prohibit the retail sale of pets because pets are not tube-based or appliances. They're individual lives. And regardless of where you fall on the spectrum of animal rights and the like, the reality is you can't treat pets that way. It doesn't work. It's wrong.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cordelia Stone. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is, as I said, Cordelia Stone. And thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. The humane ordinance that you've just heard a little bit about, that we are asking you to consider, would prevent the influx of pets from out-of-state, large-scale breeding facilities, like puppy mills into Colorado and specifically into Windsor. We are asking you to help cut off this puppy mill pipeline by making sure it does not come into Windsor. Almost all the pets sold in pet stores, as the previous speaker mentioned, including puppies, kittens, rabbits, birds, come from these out-of-state, brutally cruel, large-scale breeding facilities. The problem with these pet mills isn't just the puppies and kittens and other animals who are born there. It's their moms who are forced to continue to become pregnant, give birth, and breed again in a repeating cycle where the living conditions are awful for their whole lives. It's the reason that so many other communities in Colorado have already adopted humane pet ordinances that stop the sales of pets in pet stores. 500 cities and counties and six states in the United States have now passed pet retail store bans. This ordinance would have no impact on local, reputable Westminster breeders because responsible breeders sell directly from their homes, not to pet stores. An example of one of the large pet stores that was right here in Windsor was Puppies &amp; Stuff. It was a retail pet store that, like all retail pet stores, sourced their animals from out-of-state puppy mills. They profited from the suffering of dogs raised in commercial breeding facilities where dogs are not even required to receive veterinary care. So Puppies &amp; Stuff had to shut down after a deadly outbreak of parvo and distemper. Every single puppy was sick. Many died. Owners and families were left devastated. I've printed out just one example of more than the 50 PACFA, which is Pet Animal Care Facilities Act, complaints filed against Puppies &amp; Stuff. I've also included the news articles that detail the parvo and distemper disease outbreak at Puppies &amp; Stuff. We cannot allow these types of unethical pet sales to return to Westminster. Without a law on the books, Puppies &amp; Stuff or any similar pet store can open here tomorrow and resume the cycle of animal abuse. Please ensure that Westminster does not contribute to this serious problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And I'm going to give this stuff to her.
The next speaker is Canada Sorenson.
Hello, city council. It's nice to see you guys again. My name is Canada Sorenson. I'm here tonight to clarify an important point.
Could you put the microphone closer?
This ordinance will not impact local, reputable breeders. The impact would be placed on commercial puppy mill breeders that sell their distressed puppies to pet stores. Local breeders would never sell their dogs to a pet store. And there are two key reasons why. First, it doesn't make financial sense. Pet stores buy puppies from puppy mills for about $200 each. A reputable breeder can sell their puppies for $3,000 to $5,000 or more because they invest heavily in their dog's care. They provide genetic testing, vaccinations, top-quality food, veterinary care, and most importantly, socialization, love, and attention. They carefully screen adopters and ensure their puppies go to good homes. No responsible breeder would sell their litter to a pet store because that would result in a huge financial loss. Secondly, reputable breeders wouldn't wait to subject their puppies. They wouldn't want to subject their puppies to neglect found in pet stores. These stores are closed for more than 100 hours per week. That means these pet store puppies spend the vast majority of their lives alone, isolated, and stressed in small enclosures. They receive little to no stimulation affection for exercise. They are never allowed to go outside. This kind of mistreatment leads to serious behavioral and health issues. To pet stores, these pups are not living, breathing beings in need of care. They are just merchandise on the shelf. This ordinance would have zero impact on local hobby breeders and local reputable breeders because they don't sell pets through retail stores. They will still be able to continue to sell their kittens and puppies the way they always have, from their homes directly to buyers. Thank you for your time and attention here in Westminster looking at this potential ordinance.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Scari. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thanks for having me back again. My name is Sarah Scari, like we said, and I'm a resident of Westminster along with my boyfriend Brian Sugioke that spoke earlier. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about a powerful opportunity before you. One that can save the lives of countless pets and make our city a leader in humane policy. As you know, our animal shelters are in crisis. In 2023 alone, Foothills Animal Shelter set a record by taking in more than 10,000 animals. Every single day, more animals arrive than there are homes for. Every single day, more animals arrive than there are homes for, and shelters are stretched beyond their limits. Trying to keep up, this is not just a local issue. Nationwide, shelters are overwhelmed, over 60% report rising surrenders of every kind of dog. Poodles, golden retrievers, Labradors, pugs, Bulldogs, even so-called designer breeds, these are dogs that once sold for thousands of dollars. Now they're being surrendered in staggering numbers. People often donate generously to help rescues, but no amount of money can fix the root cause of the crisis. High-volume breeding operations, often puppy mills, are flooding the market with animals while our shelters fight to keep up. Shelters and rescues are left to pick up the pieces, caring for sick, neglected, and abandoned animals, while the people who profit from these sales face no consequences. Sorry, I have to take a minute, because that's really, it really sticks with me. This ordinance changes that. It tackles the problem at its source. It will reduce the strain on shelters, increase adoptions, and save taxpayer dollars by preventing the need for costly rehoming and medical care down the line. Westminster residents deserve safe and humane ways to bring a pet into their home, rather through responsible local breeders or regulated rescues and shelters. Let's support the organizations that work so hard to save lives. I would like to thank the council for considering this ordinance, and I'm proud of my city for being compassionate and progressive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Adrienne Voss.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Reverend Adrienne Voss. I am a teacher and advocate for feelings regardless of form. So I'm here this evening as a woman, as a mother. I know what it feels like to be pregnant and care for children. Often, I observe how other mothers, like dogs, cats, birds, rabbits, all care for their children. We have a lot in common. We all want to feel safe, and loved, and cared for, have food to eat, feel good at least once in a while. However, when trafficked animals are exploited for their reproductive abilities, they suffer. The females are forced to breed early in life, at six months of age. Kiwi had over 100 puppies in her life, probably, much more. She's now 13, I rescued her when she was nine. She's a good emotional support animal for me, I have anxiety. And often, the best service animals are those who have experienced deep trauma themselves. And why is that? Because they know how pain, and struggle, and heartache feel. They have empathy. Just like the dog we met here, who works on the victim task force with the police. Why are animals so good in therapeutic positions? Because they're healers, because they're pathic, because they feel how we feel. In 2025, exploitation of the female reproductive system in humans remains a significant issue. Over 230 million girls and women worldwide have little power over their own bodies. Much like the trafficking of other kinds of animals for breeding, 99% of humans trafficked are female, 2.6 million puppies are sold annually, with an additional 167,000 adult dogs who are solely kept for breeding, often inbred, as well to achieve a desired look, until their bodies fail. You know, animals of all kinds play an important role in our lives, we rely on them. So when will profit take precedence? When will profit not take precedence over well-being? Pet stores are very deliberate in their sales strategy. They keep mothers like Kiwi out of sight. Exploitation of the female reproductive system is a multi-level abuse, physical, emotional, behavioral, and spiritual. And all feelings matter, and it's happening worldwide, and it's trickling down from human to other species. We treat ourselves, we treat others as we treat ourselves.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tonya Harrington.
Welcome. Hello, thank you. Hello, Mayor and City Council members, thank you for your time today and for allowing me to speak. I'm here also in support of Sammy's Law, and I want to show you a picture of Rio Harrington. This is, she's not being tortured, she's actually laying on her back and her belly is being rubbed furiously by my husband. We adopted Rio from a shelter, and we were very excited to find a purebred yellow lab in a shelter, that never happens. But we quickly found out why she was available. She had come from a breeding, a puppy mill in Salina, Kansas, and she had been, in fact, a breeding mama for that puppy mill. We quickly found out that she came with heartworms. And although on the relinquishing statement of the previous owners of her, the puppy mill, they had said that she had become too big, and that's why they relinquished her. Well, at eight years old, I think we all know that a Labrador Retriever has been that size for at least seven years. So they typically reach maturity, right, in their mature size at about a year. So anyway, the real reason she was relinquished was because she had heartworm, and possibly also because she had become a little bit old to be having babies. But as many of you probably know, when an animal has heartworm, they can give those heartworms, and they do give those heartworms, to the babies, to the puppies. So they no longer are viable as a breeding mother, unless they were to all go undergo heartworm treatment, which is extremely difficult and expensive, I can tell you from personal experience, because we put her through that treatment. But before we could even put her through that treatment, she was so ill, it took about a month to get her well enough to even undergo the heartworm treatment. So they have to be, they have to be healthy enough to undergo it. The vets couldn't figure out what was wrong with her, and after treating her for pretty much everything under the sun, they ended up just cutting her open to do an exploratory, where they found nothing. And they basically just let it, left it as it was probably just stress from, from her years of being a breeding mama. At any rate, we felt lucky still to have her, because she was wonderful. Most of the breeding mothers, once they get to a certain age, or if they have an illness like she does, or did, get shot or put down in another wise horrific way. You've heard today, you know, the horrific conditions for puppy mills, the mothers have the worst of the worst, neglect, no socialization, unsanitary conditions, overcrowding, et cetera. We did see some of that with our Rio, when we adopted her and brought her home. She had food insecurity, I didn't know what it was initially, because I would be preparing her food, and the cat would walk into the room, and she would go, the dog went hysterical.
Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening, and, thank you. And my future.
The next speaker is John Palmer.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, good evening. I would like to speak of something that I was made aware of, actually not made aware of, but that I witnessed the other night at the inclusivity board meeting. Yeah, Councilor Hott decided to announce that we, I don't know who "we" is, if it's her and her friends, but I'm taking it she meant "we," as in the city of Westminster, are having a pride festival. We are not having a pride festival, the Butterfly Pavilion is having a pride night. The city of Westminster is donating 4,500 of our taxpayer dollars to this event. It's Thursday, June 20th, but the point is, it is not we, the city, are having a pride festival, we are not. So I just want that to be on the record. Understood? Next, I'd like to talk about all of this nonsense spending that we're doing. I sat in a meeting just last week and listened to the fire department chief work and the public works director talk about our needs, all of our needs, not just their needs, but the city's needs, the residents' needs. And yet, you guys turn around and pledge $300,000 to the Chamber of Commerce. They're a business, they're like any business, if you can't survive, you close up, you fold up the doors and go away. The city did fine before 2013 without our Chamber of Commerce. But again, giving away $300,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, ridiculous, we have other needs. I could go on and on, it's just, it's one thing after another. You're getting ready on this agenda tonight to give away money to make our housing. Again, that's the people's money, it should be spent on the people, not these businesses, not these developers. If they can't afford to do it, then they need to find someplace else to go. It's ridiculous, the amount of money that we continually give away to developers. Another example is the rodeo supermarket. I'm hearing we're spending over $4 million to renovate that building? Think about it, $4 million. My house isn't worth $4 million, I don't know if anybody up here says houses worth $4 million, but yet we're going to invest that in a building that will never recoup any money to make us whole again? Unheard of. It's the people's money, be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lampeau.
Welcome. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Tom Lampeau, good to be back in front of Westminster and see all you people. Tonight, as usual, I'm here to lift up the city in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' precious name, we invite you here to the city of Westminster. All praise, glory, and honor be to you. Have your way in our city, be present with us, and bring us peace. Guide your hand, bring solutions to our problems. We are your people, and we have an expectant heart for your miracles. This is your city, and you have placed our elected officials here to do your will. Guide them in their decisions, let your word come alive. Proverbs 21:1 states, "The king's heart is like channels of water in the hand of the Lord; he turns it wherever he pleases." Guide the hearts of our elected officials, so all their decisions glorify your name. This will ensure their decisions will be correct for all people. Father, you created us as people who cannot see into the future. Our view of life is limited to past and present, the future is uncertain for us. Guide us in all we do with Philippians 4:6 through 7. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition, with thanksgiving, present your request to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus. As we rely on your word, bring us peace. You are our God, and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tonya Yost. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, it's nice to see you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm here tonight to comment on the report that's being presented on your agenda this evening as the follow-up to the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority Property Agreement with Jefferson County. As a resident of the nearby neighborhood just to the east of the Who's area, this is a very disturbing development for me. The thought of building a new half-mile bike trail on the northeast, north end of the property to connect to the bridge over Andiana into the Rocky Flats area is extremely concerning. I believe that that area is contaminated, there have been recent results of contamination, and I am very concerned about this. The trail is identified as being a 14-foot-wide bike trail, 10 feet wide with two-foot shoulders. The project is described in this report tonight as requiring air monitoring, both up and downwind during the construction. Hmm, the report is silent as to why we might need to monitor the air, or what will occur if there is a positive result. The project describes that all material will be removed. Hmm, why do we have to remove all of the earth that's being disturbed? And it's also silent as to where this earth is going to go. If there is no concern with excavation on this land so close to former Rocky Flats, why are we taking such measures? I also submit that the efforts to build a trail in a sensitive habitat area for burrowing owls and other species is irresponsible. The report is silent as to any protections for the resident species. I also respectfully disagree that the report is, as it states at the top, "providing a continuum of services that preserve, promote, and protect the health, safety, environment of Westminster." Disturbing the soils that could be contaminated with plutonium, I personally feel is irresponsible and a danger to all residents living nearby. And I, I know there have been compromises, and there have been negotiations and a lot of study sessions, but I really feel it's important that you know that residents still feel this is a very concerning and a poor decision that we should not be going forward with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Thank you. That brings us to City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, members of our community. First, thank you to all the speakers who spoke this evening. Our staff is here and listening, so anyone who's asked for follow-up, we will follow-up with you directly. Next slide, please. By way of city update, I do want to announce that high-speed fiber continues to expand in Westminster. There are three firms at this time that are installing high-speed fiber optic internet cabling throughout the city. And most recently, it was City Council and staff who joined G Fiber, formerly Google Fiber, to break ground on a new fiber optic network in the Sheridan Green neighborhood. The three firms that are actively expanding their networks in Westminster are G Fiber, Metronet, and Intrepid. And we will be striving, as you can see in the illustration here, to keep an updated map on the city website with respect to these installations, so the colored areas represent the service areas for these three firms, and they are expanding, and they are keeping us apprised as they continue to expand, so that map will be changing over time. Next slide, please. Also, by way of city update, we have this evening with us Ezekiel Vasquez, and Ezekiel is in the audience. Ezekiel, if you want to just go ahead and stand and wave to folks. Ezekiel is a seasoned financial leader with over 20 years of local government experience, and he currently serves the city of Arvada as Revenue Manager, and has also made significant contributions in both San Diego, California, and Longmont, Colorado. Ezekiel is the co-chair of the Colorado Municipal League's Tax Committee, where he works on tax policy issues across the state, including having the cities be able to get revenue from internet sales, which benefited a lot of cities through COVID, for example. Mr. Vasquez is to be confirmed this evening as the city of Westminster's new Chief Financial Officer. So Ezekiel, thank you for considering extending your career into the city of Westminster, and thank you for being here tonight. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda is a full agenda, I have three slides, I'll quickly run through what we're up to this, this evening. Again, we had two presentations, both recognition events, and it was very touching to see our youth in our community be recognized for their accomplishments over the past year through the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners Youth Awards, as well as our wonderful collection of volunteers, and I think that may be the most volunteers we've seen show up for recognition. And so I think that that's testament to the engagement of our community and the commitment we have to all things city of Westminster. and the commitment we have to all things city of Westminster. We have two information-only items tonight in packet. The 2025 Comprehensive Plan Biennial Report and the Woman Creek Reservoir Authority Property Agreement with Jefferson County and the city of Westminster. And that's a follow-up memo as committed to City Council. And then on consent agenda, there are six items, which include two second readings this evening. And then public hearings, there are two. The first reading of Councilor's Bill Number 7 regarding the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and consideration of a PDP Amendment for Uplands Filing 3, Block 1, Tract A, and Block 3. And that's continued from a prior City Council meeting and hearing. And then the second item is public hearing and first reading of Councilor's Bill 10 regarding cleanup amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Next slide, please. Also up tonight are two items of new business. The first is the confirmation, as I mentioned, of our new Finance Director and Chief Financial Officer. I was here with us this evening. Then we also have first reading of Councilor's Bill 11 regarding the supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for the North Huron Urban Renewal Area Fire Station. On old business, one second reading tonight, and that's Bill Number 9 regarding the proposed Development Assistance Agreement with Maker Housing Properties at Uplands. And we will then have a WEDA meeting, so Westminster Economic Development Authority Meeting, following our regular meeting, and that is a public hearing and resolution number 239 that relates to the fire station in the North Huron area. That's a supplemental appropriation to the 2025 WEDA budget to reimburse the costs to the General Capital Improvement Fund associated with the improvements in the North Huron Urban Renewal Area. Next slide, please. This is the last slide on tonight's agenda. We do have a post-meeting presentation this evening, and that's City Council discussion on directing staff to draft an ordinance to ban the sale of live animals in pet shops in the city of Westminster. There will be then two executive sessions, the first of which will be to consult with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice related to potential coordinated actions in response to the State of Colorado House Bill 241304, House Bill 241313, and House Bill 241152. And that's pursuant to the Colorado revised statutes and also the Westminster Municipal Code. The second and final executive session of the evening will be discussion of a personnel matter, and that is the quarterly check-in with City Council for the city attorney. Next slide, please. This week, we do have some meetings and events coming up. Tomorrow is Tuesday, March 15th, from 5:30 to 6:30. In this room will be Community Update. That's a community engagement session to provide updates on key city events. Next will be Wednesday, March 16th. We do have a special permit and license board meeting from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in City Council chambers. And then on Saturday, April 19th, is the Great Global Cleanup, and that runs from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And that's throughout the city. And there will be a central gathering at City Park Recreation Center between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m. on that day. Also, on Saturday is the Art and Author Showcase, and that runs from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the MAC. Next slide, please. At our next meeting, so next Monday, April 21st, starting at 6:30 here in City Council chambers, I have an information-only memo, and that will be a draft ordinance amending the Westminster Municipal Code to update the liquor licensing code. Two presentations that evening, presentation regarding Front Range Passenger Rail and also a presentation of the city's landscape services and programs. There will also be two executive sessions, one on the strategy and progress on the proposed agreements for the Schoenberg Farm property and discussion of a personnel matter, which is City Council's quarterly check-in for the city manager. Next slide, please. As always, you can reach me directly at 303-658-2003 or jandrews@westminstercode.gov. And of course, follow the city on any one of our four social media accounts, Facebook, Instagram, X, or Nextdoor. And definitely check out the city's new website, because we have a lot of information on our website. And please give us feedback as to how you find that experience. We just overhauled it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can we just clarify? I think before we had our meeting, just before we came to meeting tonight, the cookout for the Cleanup Day was moved to the Pavilion downtown. Was that for the Cleanup Day?
I'll get confirmation on that, Mayor.
I don't have my phone out. I could go get it out. But something changed today for one of those. So I just want to make sure we guide people to the right place. Yeah, Councilor Carmelia says it's changed.
All right, well, we'll make sure the city website is up to date on that and then I can announce it in a little bit. We'll just get confirmation. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor, anybody have any questions? All right, then I'll move to City Council comments. Councilor, or Mayor Potem?
Just want to say thank you to everybody who came and provided public comment. I'm hoping that staff will follow up with, especially the communities that are expressing their desire for safety and higher quality of life. And I'm sure that we have some options that we can look into. So, and I also was hoping that the request for the park at 87th and Decatur could be added as a public request for the budget. And I just thought I'd give a quick update on the Dr. Cog Retreat that I attended on Saturday. A couple of things of note, they are looking at their membership contributions from every community and they haven't updated these for quite a while. I think currently, we pay around $34,000 annually. And they're looking at a slight increase. For us, their first proposal was about a $4,000 increase for the city. But they're also looking at different ways to pull in a little more money for supporting all of our communities and that they're looking at a tip fee. So for the transportation improvement program, that they would actually have, as part of our match, which we normally have a 20% match, they would pull from that a 1.5% fee. And that would go directly to Dr. Cog and the federal contribution would go up by that 1.5. So they're studying that. I just wanted to bring that up so that we would potentially anticipate that increase going, or the contribution going up just a little bit. They're also looking at doing a regional transportation authority and determining whether or not there's a value to doing this. This would be, a lot of COGS councils of government have a regional transportation authority as their, as part of their functionality. And it would be an additional resource for funding. And the part of the impetus is just not being sure about what the federal, you know, side of the government will be doing in the next many years, but also just as Dr. Cog is looking at what, how it can better contribute to our communities. They are looking at different revenue sources for this, including potential property tax, sales tax, and other types of fees. And they don't have anything targeted yet. The communities, the other cities were kind of real reticent. And I shared too that we were very reticent about adding any sort of sales tax that would be added to where we are, just because of our high sales tax in the community and that we wanted to be very judicious about when we do go out for that. So other communities agreed on that one, but know that it's being contemplated and they also hadn't yet established what exactly this RTA might be focused on doing. But one of the things that I thought was interesting was that they did have a local share component. And, you know, as we were talking just last week about our need for more funding for streets, this could be, you know, depending on what the revenue source is and whether it goes to the voters or not, we could actually benefit and have a local control over what those funds might be. So that was kind of attractive to a lot of communities. And finally, as you are aware, they are developing a regional housing assessment. And with that, they're, they will follow up with a regional housing action plan. And they have been looking at other models throughout the United States, at other councils of governments and how they've built and structured theirs. And so we talked about what there might be interest to have as part of that. And like, one of the bigger things that came back was that everybody was really impressed with those strategies that really had a context-based approach that could give you a menu and give you some ability to work with the types of community and neighborhoods that you're comprised of. And so anyway, that's the, that's the gist of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Carmelia.
Thank you. All right, I have quite a few things to cover. And so, yes, I want to echo thank you to everyone who came and spoke. We are listening to you and taking notes. First, I wanted to acknowledge the Every 15 Minutes event that took place, I believe, at the Stanley High School. And I just remember that I had that event when I was in high school and it's one of the most memorable things I ever went through. So thank you to our fire and police for helping participate in that for students to avoid drinking and driving for them in the future. I think that's really important, that we help our high schools reinforce that message. I also just wanted to make a note, I'm sure we'll all be saying congratulations soon, but thank you, Mr. Vasquez, for being here and congratulations on your soon-to-be-new role. I also want to bring up the CAAA event I attended on Saturday. So Saturday, I went to, it was Colorado Afghan American Association Celebration, and that took place in Carpenter Park. And I was stunned by the number of folks there. I mean, I really don't have a good count. I would like to get a good count eventually in the future, because this is an annual event. It's been going on about seven or eight years. It has only recently occurred to them to start inviting their local government so that we can get involved, and so that's why it's new to all of us. But there were thousands of people there. And so I just learned a real, I learned a lot about what their community is going through right now. And I think that that is going to be impacting our city in some ways that we need to be aware of. Their migrant has been influxing over the last three years. So they are a community that is currently growing. And so we need to be aware of that. And also make sure that our staff is aware of the language needs around Pashto and Dari that they're speaking, as well as just a lot of the services that they provide. A lot of them are merchants. And so I said, please speak to me or our city if you ever need help finding permits, et cetera. You know, we're here to help and we can figure that out. But I just wanted the rest of council to know that it was, it was a really incredible event and I look forward to going next year and I look forward to also, I have a feeling they'll be reaching out eventually for sponsorship. So we'll see how that conversation goes. Then I also wanted to mention, I was also at the Dr. Cog Retreat as well with Mayor Potem. And she covered a lot of what they concentrated on. They did concentrate a lot on focusing on where they believed that we could get creative with dollars, which is interesting, as we've all been focusing on that a lot. And Mayor Potem brought a lot of those up. So really, we were just doing surveys on what do we think would be attractive. We did push back a little bit on the tax one, but as Mayor Potem said, if we get the right argument, we could get some local share back. They also discussed the metro vision. They just revamped and redesigned their metro vision, which is their guiding guidance for all of the participating municipalities. It wasn't, in my opinion, any new information. It was concentrating on transportation, mobility, environment, housing, livability, vitality, healthy and safe ways to do all of the above. And it was good overall. Our feedback was how specifically can municipalities use this information? So hopefully, they'll follow up with a little bit more specific guidance on that. It was very high level. And I also just want to say, I know we all attended the Chamber Gala. That was impressive. Most of all, I want to call out the wastewater treatment facility tour that Counselor Ireland and I attended last week. I'm extremely grateful to staff that put that on. That was, it was a fantastic, very detailed tour. I learned a lot and it was really fun stuff as well. I got to be walked through our reclaimed water treatment facility. I think it's interesting that Westminster, like many of the things that we do around our infrastructure, we own and operate our own treatment plant. And just some small information, so if folks know, there are 411 miles of pipes for this treatment plant in Westminster. It was more than I could grasp, and so there's a lot to take care of. It was also interesting to learn the facilities were built, the original ones were built in '72. And so I got to learn about how important it is to make sure that we are investing and upkeeping the infrastructure there, because that's not a whole lot younger than our Semper plant. And then, of course, we got to see all sorts of fun parts, like the nitrification and denitrification process and turning the waste into biosolids, if anybody's interested in that. It was really fascinating. But I just want to say that we have some of the highest standards wastewater, I'm sorry, Westminster has our own lab for treating our water, which is also impressive. We don't send it out to third party. And we got to watch the clean water, you know, being discharged into the creek. So we know that it's healthy and we're not causing eutrophication, et cetera. Just wanted to give a detailed, because thank you, that was really impressive, that tour. I also want to call out that April, we are in the middle right now of Autism Awareness Month. And I personally have several siblings that are institutionalized or will require lifelong care for their autism. And in the world of city leadership and government, I think this is highly relevant to mention. And I want to say that I'm really proud that we have a city that is on the forefront of this topic of modern solutions around this, because we have our co-responder program. And I know that in the news, we just recently saw another tragedy around this topic. And so I just want to keep it top of mind. And I'm grateful that I think that we in Westminster are doing the right things on this. And thank you for that. The rest of my comments that are on the specific topics for tonight, I will save. And then as far as public comments, I will address the one, Tonya, thank you so much for speaking about the Greenway Trail. For the most part, we're going to say that as it's later, but I just want to say that I believe that the agenda you saw tonight is in part because council here, for the majority, agrees fully with you. And so what you're seeing is actually the solution to the problem that you brought up. So we agree. We have done everything we can to extract ourselves from this agreement. And all of those items that we are covering tonight are solutions. And so I am really excited to talk about the solutions that I saw, especially around putting more soil down to help stabilize the area and reseeding it. I'm really grateful that so much work was done on that. And then a lot of the comments that I heard, I know that our staff is taking notes already, but just know that we will be getting back to you. Thank you for bringing up the corner of 87th Place and Decatur, that there is a park needed. That'll be top of mind for us as we go through the vision plan. Thank you for the 118th and Zunai Danger Corner. It's good for us to hear from residents of that area exactly what's going on. And thank you especially to Cottonwood Villas. I'm sorry about the issues that you are all facing. And we will take that seriously and try to figure out what it is that we can do and what we can consider to change what it is that's happening there. I'm trying to see what else I might have missed. And please know I'll speak to the ordinance, the pet ordinance, when we get there. Thank you all so much for your care and compassion for our community.
Counselor Ireland?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Of course, I always want to thank the guardians for all their volunteer hours that they put in to help really save the taxpayers' money. And everyone enjoy that space that they've enjoyed for, for years. I went to the wastewater treatment plant and what I took away, the people there are tremendous workers. They're, you know, there's probably more work than most of us would want to do for what they put in there. Anyway, our state is regulating PFAS to the point is not even attainable for the technology that we currently have. So as a citizen, I think that we all should be educated about what in our homes are causing PFAS, because they've done testing all over our city and homes put out the most PFAS in our sewer system. Our PFAS are at a level that is acceptable, but not to the level that our state is trying to regulate. And if our state regulates to the point that they want to, it will be another $100 million at our wastewater treatment plant to get it down to that undetectable level, which to me is unacceptable. We can't afford it. I think we all need to learn what we're doing in our homes to put even PFAS in our wastewater. And so I hope we can get educated. I know that astroturf is a problem and there's a lot of residents that have put astroturf in, because our water rates have gotten so high, they can't afford grass. So we have to look at this in a complete fashion as how do we stop, prevent PFAS from getting into our wastewater. getting into our wastewater, instead of trying to get them out afterward, because it is just too expensive. Also, I am really concerned about the homelessness at Cottonwood Villas. I used to live down there as a young mother. And what has happened to our city is unacceptable. Homeless people should not have as many rights as those trying to keep their homes and be safe and raise their children. I'm sorry, they're trying to keep the laws. They're not exposing themselves. They're not doing drugs. They're paying their taxes and trying to do what they're supposed to do as good citizens. And we need to have ordinances to protect these people. It's not enough just to climb over them every time you go out your door. It's not acceptable. And as a leader of the city, I can't tolerate it. I also am very concerned about wasteful spending in this city. I've been on an HOA where we had a group of people who liked to have parties. And it was only about 20% of the HOA. But guess who gets to pay for all the parties? Everyone, even the ones that don't go to the party. So, why do you think our HOAs kept going up? Because people were irresponsible with our money. This is what we have in our city going on. There is wasteful spending that we can cut. And giving developers our money to build things that we do not want is wasteful spending, in my eyes. And I will be voting no on the maker property tonight. Thank you very much.
Counselor Hott?
Yes, I just want to double check with staff that you are going to be following up with the folks at Cottonwood Villas. And also, the way our current ordinances are, I don't understand why more isn't able to be done, because that is private property. And private property is treated differently than public property. So, I don't, I don't understand why those folks are not being removed. And then, I wanted to say, so I did have a meeting with the city manager this week. I talked about the things that I learned in Washington DC at NLC. I shared with him the Sales Tax 150, which is a very interesting document that talks about the different businesses that are in our community or in other communities, and what tax revenue each business, so like, for example, at Costco in, at a sales tax rate of 2% produces over $5 million of revenue. And it would be even more for Westminster, because we have a higher tax rate than 2%. So, because it lists out all these different businesses and how much tax revenue comes from these businesses, I thought it would be a really good document to share with staff. Another thing that we talked about, that I learned about, was some solutions to small-scale development, especially since Westminster is almost completely built out. And the areas that have not been developed that are, that can be developed are the areas that are hardest to develop. So, we talked about some potential solutions for the city, ways that the community can even be more involved in what kind of housing that we may have, and to make it easier so that developers will want to develop those areas, because it can, when it's a smaller area, it can be cost prohibitive. And then, I also attended the LGBT meeting at NLC. And we learned a lot about ways that cities can be inclusive, more inclusive. And so, we talked about that as well. And then, I also did sit in for the inclusivity board. And I did announce something that I am very excited about. The City of Westminster has partnered with the Butterfly Pavilion for our very first Pride celebration. And I am very happy with Parks and Rec for making that connection. And we would like to do more in the future. But because this, we didn't have a whole lot of time for planning, this is what Parks and Rec came up with, was to partner with the Butterfly Pavilion. So, yes, Westminster is having their very first Pride celebration. And I hope you're all able to make it. Thank you so much. Oh, and then I will talk more about, I want to thank everyone that was here for Sammy's Law. And I will talk more about the importance of that. And especially since more and more municipalities are coming up with these ordinances, that makes Westminster a more prime area for these pet shops to move into, as more and more communities are not able to have them. And I think that it's very important that we prevent that. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Demat?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came in tonight. I additionally want to ask that we look into the situation with the homeless. I'm curious around the same thing that Counselor Hott brought up, as far as private. However, I would ask the public to go listen to the study session from March 3rd. There was a presentation from staff. They asked us for some additional tools and ordinances in order to address homelessness. The majority of this council said no. And that came from our police department and our staff, saying, here are problems that we have, areas where we aren't as efficient as we can be. And that was from our staff. So, you can listen to that. I would encourage you to, because as I listened to the speakers tonight, specifically when somebody was taking a stroll with their kid, and they saw the homeless person with his pants down, that's on a public sidewalk. That's a different situation than the private situation. And those are the kind of things that the police were mentioning to us in terms of the ordinances that they would like changed in order to give them some extra tools, to, you know, start with compassion and services, and then the folks that don't want to live with inside the lawn, and take those services, that we can do something else. So, I hope that at some point, we are able to, as a council, realize that we need to address those things. Last thing I would say is, if you attend my Policy in Pilsner, which is every Thursday of the month, I actually am not going to have that this month. I had a conflict, because I'm going to the Butterfly Pavilion. They're having their conservancy fundraiser. I've been on the board of Butterfly Pavilion the entire time I've been on council. It's an important educational organization when it comes to invertebrate. If you don't understand what invertebrate does for our ecosystem, I would encourage you to go to the Butterfly Pavilion and learn about it. They're a great partner to our community and our schools. So, I want to make sure that I'm there to support them, not just as a city leader, but also as one of their board members. So, with that, we will meet again in May. And so, I hope that you can join us in May for my Policy in Pilsner event.
Counselor Sadi?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to just, once again, thank all of the 24 young people that came out today and received recognition from the Adams County Mayors and Commissioners, the Youth of the World Program. That really struck me, because I think we need a lot more recognition for our youth who overcome struggle. You know, this award is given to folks who have seen adversity in their life and overcame it. And I think in this society that we live in today, where everything is a struggle, everything is much more difficult now, I think there are a lot of people out there that just need that extra motivation to keep going, right? And that's why those recipients tonight should really be applauded. And I'm anxious, in a good way, to see where they end up, right? To see what their futures look like. So, I wanted to start there. Brian Miller, if you're still here, thank you for sending that information to me. That has been added. I think city manager confirmed yesterday that that has been added to the budget request. So, I will advocate for that. And city manager, for the Prospectors Point situation with the park, I assume staff will be reaching out to them to follow up on what's going on there. And I wanted to clarify, so I want to clarify for, so Tonia, if you're still here, that, thanks again, nothing has changed. We, Westminster voted to not build that bridge, and the bridge is not being built on Westminster land. That's not what this memo is saying. This memo is talking about an existing social trail and other situations that occurred. But we have not reversed any decision on that. So, if you want to speak more to me or staff, or any of staff, Jody, can you please explain what this memo is actually talking about? Because it, I reread it again, and it does sound like it's confusing, the wording. So, I think, and there are some folks who came to my office hours today confused as to, they think that we went back and reversed. But that's not what's happening.
City manager, did you run a responder?
I can ask staff, our acting director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries can come up and describe these measures while Mr. Otzelberger joins us at the front. I can confirm, Mayor, you are correct. There has been a location change for the global cleanup event, and that is, in fact, at our downtown plaza. So, the updated information is on our city website. And we got that information out. And I, it may have to do with the weather. I'm not sure, because there is a covered area at the plaza. Just as Mr. Otzelberger is joining us, I would confirm that, as directed by city council in a series of discussions and in interactions with Jefferson County officials, the City of Westminster staff worked very hard to have protections put in place for the existing social trail that is already up in that area of the Westminster Hills open space to be improved. And some of the measures put in place are very consistent with addressing the concerns that we heard from the community members who spoke. And that is, any soil to be disturbed in the area, there would be precautions put in place. And so, the soil currently is being disturbed by social trail users in that part of the Westminster Hills open space in such a manner that it's not controlled. So, when there's rain and other things happening, and then it dries out, and there's dust, those sorts of things impact that. So, as directed by city council, staff has worked to get measures installed to protect that. And that is removing any soil that needs to be removed, installing non-local soil to lay down a dressing on top so that any users of that social trail will now be walking on non-native soils. And then, I believe Counselor Carmelia raised this a number of times, then some dressing along the edges of the trail to plant species there that would help anchor the soil and the edges of those trails. And then, staff will continue to be working to see if there's additional measures, possibly a fence. But we're not sure about that part of it yet. Mr. Otzelberger, how do I do?
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, Eric Otzelberger, acting director of Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And just to confirm, between 11:00 and 1:00 p.m., as a former sandwich artist, I will be there to support the cause for the lunch for the Great Global Cleanup. And thank you for all the volunteers. All the materials are at City Park. And we have a large, large number of volunteers. So, as directed by city council, we've been in strong communication and been doing a lot of encouragement with Federal Highways Administration. This project is technically administered by the Federal Highways Administration for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We've been in close coordination with Jefferson County. As outlined in the memo, we are exerting that influence to go, quite frankly, above and beyond typical specs for these sorts of projects. And everything, you know, from compacting the soil to high-tech geotechnical liner, outside material, road base, surface, two-foot shoulders, really good technical specs. Something that I did want to mention for the good of the order, this is the only section of trail where Federal Highways is granting us latitude on the sighting. So, we are working in collaboration to minimize grade. And there's, with the topography there, it's not an overly hilly area. But we have the unique opportunity to cite the actual trail alignment to minimize disturbance. And that's with contours and things of that nature. So, as the city manager referenced, in the game of trade-offs, we have social trails that are used that there's disturbance. This will be a kind of controlled, funneled trail, you know, versus kind of spread-out disruption across the area. And as in the memo too, I just wanted to mention and recognize the good work of the open space team, following up from decisions last year related to the Westminster Hills area. Staff has been busy over the last couple of months to close down illegal access off of Indiana, work on some fencing improvements to demarcade between the off-leash area and the other area, and working on some revegetation. It was also brought up, Mr. Yost brought up the burrowing owls. That is, that is something that is being evaluated by wildlife staff. If there is any owl activity identified, there's the potential that the project could be delayed, because there's a window of time. And I won't speak beyond my knowledge when it comes to wildlife. But just, I wanted to acknowledge, I appreciate her bringing that up. And that is something that staff and project managers are aware of and working with as before this trail moves forward.
Thank you. And just to be clear to the concerns that I'm hearing, right, because you mentioned a lot of different pieces there. The concern is that folks believe what we did last year has been reversed. And I want to confirm very clearly, nothing has been reversed. We are actually improving the existing social trail, so it's safer. That's all that's happening. Thank you.
While you're there, for total transparency, would you talk about the money we paid and that the bridge is going in?
Yes. So, per recent actions of this city council, Jefferson County Board of Commissioners and the Open Space Board for Jefferson County, there was agreement around the Woman Creek Parcel. And as part of that agreement, the city made good on its payment to Jefferson County. And once again, we are not driving, driving this trail. And so, that occurred.
Yeah. I just think we need to be totally transparent. It is coming.
Additionally, just because, I mean, I was on the other side of the vote that said, pull the money from the trail. We did pay the money. When we had those discussions, I also want to be clear that most of the council said, let's look at not completing the trail. But we did not want to pull what was already agreed to with the other government entity. So, to me, there's a lot of things being set up here that I don't agree with. What I will say is, that money was from, majority of council said, we're not going to spend it. We did give that money and make it whole, which I think is the right thing to do, because it was promised to that entity. I'm glad to see that we're doing some of the improvements that are going to make, you know, our area safer. But the other thing I want to say is, that bridge was never going to go on Westminster property. And there was never a thing that it wasn't going to be built. Jefferson County said they were going to build it with or without us. I mean, that was already going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
So, I wanted to make sure that the trail that's being built is not Jefferson County building the trail, right?
Sorry.
Because they wanted a trail through there.
Sorry, Counselor. No, technically, Federal Highways Administration is building the trail for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
So, it is a trail. It is not, you're talking about asphalt?
Road.
A trail through our city property, West.
Road base.
So, they are doing the trail, even though we said we didn't want the trail. This was not presented to us this way. I'm sorry. It's not transparent.
I have not yet shared. Easter egg hunt on Saturday was terrific. Parks and Rec, your people, I don't, they are the Energizer bunnies. And the Easter bunny was there. But everybody had great things to say. So, thanks to all of them for their enthusiasm. Cottonwood Villas, I went to them last Tuesday night. There were 40 in attendance. What a great group of HOA people. Great questions. I did not know until I got there and talked to all of them that it is about 40. I did not know until I got there and talked to all of them that it is about 40, 51, 49 in all of those buildings that rental, and you can buy a condo. So with some of their issues, and I talked with this to city manager in our pre-meeting before tonight's meeting, and shared, so you have some homeowners in a building, and you have renters in a building, and they're just confused as to who they contact about different issues and whatnot, and they're already on the questions that I had sent from that meeting and working with folks. And I had two police officers with me, all three of us had people around us asking, they just were great questions, there's such positivity, and they're looking for solutions. And the biggest thing is, as I told city manager, some of the apartment buildings have code locks to get into the building, and some still don't. They're working on getting that done through HOA management, but it's the ones that don't have those codes that people are just walking into. So they come out of their apartment or their condo, and people that shouldn't be in there are there. So police said it was great to know, don't hesitate to call. So it just, we could have gone on for two more hours, I think, but I just appreciate them coming tonight and sharing in their own words what's going on there. Last Wednesday morning, I left to go to DC with Northwest Mayors and County Commissioners. It's a group that's been together for 26 years along our corridor. It goes from Longmont to Westminster, Broomfield into Boulder and every city in between. There were over 20 of us that attended, and so we're a pretty powerful group when we go to the Hill. We started out with Representative Nagus, we saw Representative, Senator Pedersen, we went to House Highways and Transit Staff Meeting, we went to Representative Deget, we went to Representative Evans, we went to see Senator Michael Bennett, we saw Senator Hickenlooper, we went to Senate EPW Highways Meeting, we went to the Senate Commerce Rail Staff, we went to Senate Banking Transit Staff, we went to Senate EPW Highways Meeting, we went to the House Transportation Rail Committee Subcommittee Staff Meeting, and we went to dinner and fell in our shoes on the way home. It was a long day. Got up on Friday morning, we had a 9:00 a.m. with U.S. Department of Transportation. We talked to, we had multimodal meetings at that U.S. Department, we talked to folks that were involved with Deputy Assistant Secretary for Internal Affairs of the Office of Secretary, we talked to Intergovernmental Affairs Senior Advisor, the Congressional Affairs Specialist, Government Affairs Specialist for FRA, and Transportation Specialist for HFHWA. And some of these people we've met before in our visits, some are new because of transition. And then we met to Government Affairs Outreach Specialist for FTA. We then caught the metro, grabbed the plane with an hour to spare, and got home about 4:30 Friday afternoon. It is a whirlwind meeting, but they sit there in awe with all of us sitting there, and were asking with one voice, this visit was Highway 7 that goes from Boulder to Brighton, also 287 that goes from Longmont through Broomfield, because we've had many safety issues there, head-on crashes, there's no medians, people just cross and hit other cars head-on. So they're looking for safety things to go on 287. And even though they may not touch Westminster, we have residents that use those roads. So that's, the ones that don't touch U.S. 36 were there for us when we were going the Tiger Grant and doing things to get the bus lanes on 36. So it has been a coalition unheard of for 26 years, and they do a great job. And we had people sort of with their jaws open, meeting us for the first time, going, and you're all here? And we said, yes, and we all agree. That's unheard of. So I just give a shout out to Community Solutions, and some of us are in our NADA group, that is the North I-25 piece. We can do great things and continue getting federal money in here because we are a coalition. And I appreciate the city that has been a partner in that for all these years. Then we finished Friday night off with the Chamber Gala, Chamber did a great job, and it was a lot of fun. So that, taking, I don't see anybody else wanting to talk, that takes us to the consent agenda. Councilor Demond?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, items 8A through 8F as presented.
Mayor Potem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass items 8A through 8F. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Councilor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councilor Demond?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Councilor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally? Sorry, yes. Mayor Potem?
Yes.
And Councilor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. And before we get into public hearings, I've been asked if we could just take a few seconds, maybe five minutes.
Staff, agenda memo has been created. Tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo is associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public notices published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices and the posted notices are hereby entered as the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing will mail to 1,001 property owners, addresses in one HOA within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. Four public notification signs were posted on the subject property. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Here's a map of the Uplands filing 3, Block 1, Track A, and Block 3, outlined in red, which comprises planning areas C, sections 1B and 1C. And this is PUD's own property. The property is located on the southeast corner of Federal Boulevard and West 88th Avenue. This comprehensive plan amendment proposes to change the designation from commercial mixed use to urban multifamily, and this is to remove the requirement for commercial uses to be integrated with multifamily residential developments. If re-designated to urban multifamily, no commercial development would be allowed. Section 11521 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing land use plan amendments. Staff finds that the comprehensive plan amendment generally meets these criteria, as outlined in the agenda memo in more detail. This is the PDP Amendment. The PDP Amendment aligns the allowed. The PDP amendment aligns the allowed uses with the proposed comprehensive plan designation. And the change is from commercial mixed use to urban multifamily. No access points or density allowances are being changed with this amendment. If approved, multifamily development or townhomes without a commercial component will be allowed on the site moving forward. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and PDPs. Staff finds that the applicant's preliminary development plan amendment generally meets these criteria, and that's outlined in more detail in the Agenda Memo. Staff recommends that City Council hold a public hearing and approve the comprehensive plan amendment and PDP amendment. The Planning Commission met on February 11th of 2025 and voted unanimously in favor of a recommendation for approval of the application. This is a vote of seven to zero. Staff finds that approval of the applications would meet the city's strategic plan priorities of access to opportunity and economic vitality by facilitating new and diverse housing opportunities. The applicant's with us tonight, and he has a presentation to share with you as well. Staff will be present afterward to answer any questions that you may have from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. Counselors, thanks very much for this opportunity. My name is Marcus Pockner. I'm a land use and community outreach consultant for the Uplands. We are here tonight with two requests. First, a comprehensive plan amendment, and then, as John outlined, a PDP, a corresponding PDP amendment. This is the site, again, parcel C, east of Federal, as we're talking about tonight, the 1B and 1C kind of sub-area of the neighborhood. This shows, again, the notice, just under 1,000 people. We actually had a great neighborhood meeting about this many months ago, and a great discussion at Planning Board as well. As always, we give a little snapshot on Uplands. This is the only general slide that we're showing tonight on Uplands before we focus on the C parcels. But this shows this, as you all know, the A3 neighborhood was approved as well. So all of the A parcels, except for the Town Center parcels, are now approved, as you see the site plans, and D1 and B2 are working through there. I did want to share that I was at B1 neighborhood today, and there are four foundations that have been poured, so the very first homes are starting construction in the B1 neighborhood. And then, over there at St. Charles, there are actually full buildings that are framed and under construction. The first buildings that were open, will open on Uplands, will be an affordable housing development. For the other generalized Uplands updates that we always give, we focused here on east of Federal Boulevard to really show the context of the neighborhood here and talk about that. So you see the waterline improvements that are happening around the Maker site, the extension of 87th and north there on Decatur up to 88th. You're seeing those roadways, they're all in place today, and seeing the corresponding water improvements as well, also the storm and drainage improvements that are happening there. This shows, which is actually mentioned in public comments today, the three-acre PLD that is right between a number of these parcels here that people were talking about, that's just around three acres, and is really important. Of course, there's such a great opportunity here with the turnaround area, and then Cam and Ish Park really making that connection to the amazing Highlands open spaces there. This shows, again, the infrastructure that shows this connection focused on 88th, that 10-foot multi-use trail is in, now in orange. You're starting to see the grading of the off-site, which is also 10 feet, that goes all the way down to Highview and Zunai there. So you're seeing a lot of this street come in. We actually had to put up a temporary stop sign, as was requested at our last hearing here at 87th and Decatur, just because there is fabric coming into that neighborhood. There is traffic, pedestrian, there's a lot of activity there to show that. So you're really starting to see all of these amenities come into place. Maybe last view for me is just showing the context of this site, again, 1B and 1C, and how this neighborhood has changed so much in the Uplands Plan, and really with all of your support and looking at the vision. You see Maker, the expansion of Crown Point on both edges, that park, and then St. Charles Company, the need for even discussed here as we did, market rate affordable, or market rate multifamily housing here, and finding that right partner. As you know, or maybe don't know, on the east or north side there of 88th, there is a gas station coming in at the old Eagle Site in Federal Heights. So it's also talking about the intersection of 88 there as well. We're going to turn now to the comprehensive plan amendment. Kaylee's going to walk through this and the PDP, and then we're going to come back and talk a little bit about the water use and related on this one.
Welcome.
Thank you, Marcus, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Counselors. Kaylee Gillespie with Norris Design. Thank you for your time this evening, as we'll be walking through the two applications in front of you in further detail for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the Uplands Preliminary Development Plan Amendment. As Marcus outlined, we're focusing our attention on a portion of the C1 planning area of the Uplands community. This area is outlined in white on the screen in the purple color. Under the current 2040 COP Plan, this area is designated as commercial mixed use, which recommends multifamily, retail, commercial, and office as the primary uses. Residential density is permitted up to 36 dwelling units per acre, as long as a minimum commercial floor area ratio of 0.1 along with residential uses. The existing COP Plan designation and site locations have created challenges for developing this area. With the amount of residential development of this parcel, it is required that there also be 43,780 square feet of commercial as part of the mixed-use development. For comparison, the grocer building located just to the south in Summit Square is approximately 50,000 square feet. The extent of this commercial requirement, along with the site's location and limited access, has deterred mixed-use and multifamily developers from pursuing this site. We presented the prior findings to City Council at the Concept Review Meeting in June of last year. At that time, our plan contemplated designating C1B as commercial and C1C as multifamily. In general, Council noted a preference for additional market rate multifamily to help create a mixed-income neighborhood, and suggested removing the commercial requirement for both C1B and C1C to promote housing rather than developing subpar commercial or creating additional vacant buildings. By removing the commercial component and encouraging development of market rate multifamily housing, we can further support the existing and future commercial areas that are more viable for commercial within Uplands and the greater Westminster. These challenges are not just our opinions, but are rooted in what we've seen in our marketing efforts over the last few years. In the spring of 2023, we marketed this site to over 5,100 developers and investors. This included mixed-use, retail, hospitality, senior housing, multifamily, and medical office developers. Of that group, a total of six multifamily developers showed initial interest, but all moved on due to the extensive commercial requirements tied to the COP Plan designation. And outside of this effort, one non-solicited gas provider expressed interest. The existing commercial land around Uplands and within the city tells a similar story. There are multiple vacant commercial buildings located within the adjacent blocks of the Uplands community. Just to our south, at the corner of 84th and Federal, highlighted in red on the right-hand side of the screen, is a commercial development known as Summit Square that includes vacancies of the smaller in-line lease and an office building. In fact, the whole of Westminster, there is estimated to be over 1.2 million square feet of vacant retail office buildings, as noted from the commercial analysis on the city's website, further supporting the request to remove the commercial requirement from C1B and C1C. The existing 2040 COP Plan shown on the left-hand side of the screen in the magenta color is the commercial mixed use as it stands today, and the right-hand image showing the proposal of the urban multifamily in brown. This amendment complies with many things. It promotes the development of the much-needed market rate housing in a mixed-income neighborhood setting. It reduces the amount of traffic by more than 1,300 trips a day, and it provides additional rooftops that further support existing and future retail success. It retains similar development standards for land use types, building heights, and densities, while activating Federal Boulevard and the future bus rapid transit. It complies with the goals of the 2040 COP Plan by locating residential densities along the east side of Federal and providing a balance of land use to support a diverse economy in a 20-minute neighborhood. The second application we're pursuing is an amendment to the approved Uplands Preliminary Development Plan. The PDP amendment is also needed to remove the commercial requirements from C1B and C1C and comply with the proposed COP Plan amendment. The current approved PDP allows for 300 residential units within C1B and C1C. The requested PDP amendment does not change the allowance of density or units, but also provides the much-needed housing to be built sooner by removing the commercial requirements. Building heights will remain unchanged from the existing PDP and allowing up to five stories. This amendment does not affect the infrastructure of the park commitments within the original PDP. The infrastructure system has been designed to meet the original master plan, and those same improvements are being provided with this amendment. With that, I'm going to pass this back to Marcus to walk us through our final slides.
Well, let's finish up here. We always come back and talk about water conservation and water usage. We are saving 100 acre feet right off the top. We've made that pledge. And then, as you can see on each parcel, the savings, we have an additional eight acre feet that we're saving thus far in the proposed or the approved neighborhoods. So we'll be adding to that and updating that as we go, of course, onsite and particularly in our landscaping. But right now, we're at 108 acre feet that we are saving. We believe, and the staff report was terrific, staff has been very collaborative in this process, looking at the approval criteria for both. We believe we're in full compliance with all of the underlying approval criteria. And I do want to just say in summation that we are responding to changes in the market condition and the way it was planned. We do believe this is really providing much-needed market rate housing in that neighborhood. It's such a, to really provide a true diversity and blend of housing there, how important it is for the bus rapid transit, and really provides that 20-minute, a complete neighborhood there. I do want to say and be very fair that we absolutely underscore and know the importance of sales tax and know that discussion that we had with all of you in concept. But we actually believe this doubles down, double down, and actually promotes good sales tax to come back to Summit Square and to the Town Center across the street. This would be a much more challenged site for retail, and we believe that this is bearing out in the market and a way to really bring in those homes to support retail all along Federal and all along this corridor. So we want to be sure that this is a, we think this is a very positive and reinforcing message for Westminster and what really will add to the overall culture and the commercial entities in Uplands as well. So with all of that, we certainly request your support and look forward to any questions you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Ireland?
So what is, I've heard from the people down there that they really were looking forward to having some retail that was viable, and I thought that's why we were building this Uplands neighborhood, so we could have more viable retail because of all the people down there.
Sure.
So for me, it's a concern because we, because, you know, our taxes are based on sales tax.
Sure.
And people were really looking forward to having some retail, so.
Yeah, I certainly understand it. I think it was a very good discussion that we've had. I think the challenge of the way that zoning worked was it was ground-level retail all across the site, right? So again, thinking of that, almost the size of Summit Square's grocer and into Decatur, we all know that really a gridded network is coming in there, streets are being built, but that would pull that in. So people say that, but you can't access it off of Federal. You'd have to go into 86th Place or 87th or park more into the neighborhood. So we just thought that overall impact, this is actually much more supportive to pull that in, the Town Center, to have that balance and really support Summit Square. So I support that. I hope that's true, that we hear that, and I hope we hear from those same very people that with the light at 86, the Town Center will have that retail. So that's a very walkable, we'll have that in the same context, one block away. So we hope it's that, still that same mix. So Counselor, we believe we're addressing that, but what would happen here if it had the same component is nothing gets built there for 20-plus years. There's no market there, nothing happens with that. So it doesn't lead to retail, and it also doesn't lead to housing. It leads to a vacant site, and that's what we're seeing on that site and in so many other places. So that's why we're making the change.
I can see that. How are you saving water? Because retail usually uses less water than residential.
Yeah, it certainly depends on that. And just to remind, the way this works on the zoning, it was an FAR, right? So we have the same number of residential units, but then on top of that, there was an FAR for the retail. So we're actually just having the residential. So we're taking away some of those uses, additional uses that would be on the site. So that's how we're looking at some of that. It certainly depends, Counselor, you're right, about the type of retail, what they use. But again, this is 300 units for 300 units. There's no change in the residential impact on water. We're taking away uses.
Mayor Pro Tim? I had a question about, maybe staff could weigh in on this regarding this particular use that we're, the urban multifamily. I am sad to see that we're, you know, relinquishing all the retail possibility on this site. We're bringing in a lot of units on that north end of the area, and I'm just wondering over time if there's a use that, in the COP Plan, that might allow for future commercial in that site. Let's say they had, you know, a ground floor lobby space or something that over time there's enough demand. So just kind of curious if staff had looked at, you know, I know there's the urban multifamily versus the mixed-use activity center, which could accommodate that multifamily, but maybe leave a little more room for commercial in the future.
So Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for your questions. So our economic development staff did review the application. There was a lot of support for the applicant's rationale and agreement with that. We want to make sure that we don't undermine our ability or the applicant's ability to bring that village center on parcel A. We also recognize, as the applicant does, that the existing commercial in the area is suffering and could use more residential uses to support it. One thing that I think the applicant alluded to, but maybe didn't say specifically, was the type of retail that was gravitating toward that site ended up on the other corner in Federal Heights. And so the type of retail that was attracted to it really wasn't neighborhood-serving retail. And so again, our staff analysis really comes to the same conclusion. We would be much better off with more rooftops in that area to support the existing commercial, and most importantly, that future village center that's going to be really important. And that's something that staff's going to want to stand behind, is that village center.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just thinking, far beyond today, like what happens in 20 years, when this is a place that you will have a lot of people and you will potentially have some desire, you're going to have the little childcare facility up there, kind of islanded out there without, you know, have to walk, you know, a couple blocks, I guess, to get down to some services. I'm hoping that, I guess my other question is probably for staff, but also maybe for the applicant, is, you know, the Summit Square retail, are there ways that the applicant can work with the city's staff in the Chamber of Commerce to help move? I mean, I know it takes bodies first to get the retailers interested, but are there thoughts about building relationships and helping to feed that?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that, Mayor Pro Tim. I think most notably, I mean, the owners of Summit Square, as you all know, have been a longstanding family that has owned that. Within the last year, probably within the last six months, a large Indian market has occupied most of that grocer space, and that's certainly been a change. We are in very close contact with them and talk to them often. There's also some land that's just to the north of the hospital there, so there's some areas there that people, we have a lot of discussions about how that changes over time and how to support them. So Mayor Pro Tim, we think it is imperative that we support that. We've all talked about that, so we work very closely with them. It is interesting that in Concept Review, we heard from folks even said, hey, if there's a pharmacy or something like that, more neighborhood services. We actually went back to that market particularly, and there is just not interest on that site. The gas station took away kind of the other amenities that they sell there, right? So when that went to Federal Heights there, that was a, it really kind of changed that. So I think we looked at that, we understand the interplay of that. We have had so much feedback, as you can imagine. We have had so much feedback, as you can imagine, from the multifamily market that would build there today if that were not required, right? So we do think we'll see an immediate change on that and interest from the multifamily. So I understand it. Again, we think it really supports across the street, and we know you're going to hold us to that, and you should. We understand that wholeheartedly.
Okay. Anyone else? Councillor Carmelia?
This is along the same vein, and I think you've more than answered the question, but I just want to call it out, and this again might be for city staff, but is there a notable food desert in that area? Where's the closest store?
Yeah, I know our group knows that, but we, there is. I think that was, you know, the change now with the market that's come in. I'm thinking it's probably south, right?
84th and Pecos is a King Supers.
There you go.
And 104th is another King Supers.
Yeah.
And federal.
There is, I think there's certainly, we know the retail that's along federal, right? Along that corridor, we were getting the same interest, right? That same type. And I think honestly, with the Maker parcel that's under construction now, we actually thought that would kind of really impact that with the auto use across the street as well. So it created kind of that. So there is, there's a food desert. We are, you know, certainly hearing some interest, more interest on the Town Center, really because of the access of the light and not having to go into the neighborhood to park. That's the great challenge of this site.
That's, thank you. I'm excited to hear the future plans for Town Center.
Great.
Anyone else? I just know there's times where we just need to listen to what the retailers want to do, and I know how long it took Makers at 71st Avenue to get, they left that bottom and it stayed empty for a very long time. And so you have to weigh, is that good either? So I understand it and am willing to listen to the market and let us have some rooftops.
Great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any public testimony? Yes, the first speaker we have signed up is Aaron Varner. Welcome.
Good evening again. Again, my name is Aaron Varner. I live at 8685 Clay Street in Prospectors Point. Serve on the Prospectors Point Board of Directors. And the entire time, 15 years that I've lived there, longest I've ever lived anywhere, I have been a teacher at Crown Point, so I spent a lot of time on this hilltop, which is why it's important to me. And so with that in mind, and as a representative for 400 Westminster Homes, I just ask really caution and care and to think about tabling such a decision on parcel C-1B and C-1C. The council should not undermine the comprehensive plan designation of this property without knowledge of the commercial plans of Uplands Parcel A-8 on the west side of Federal. At this point, the application for change, it may not be what's best for Westminster, but what's best for the landowner. A no vote does not stall the development as a whole, and it does not hurt the city to wait patiently to see if the Uplands development as a whole needs this commercial space or if the current future residents of the area would truly benefit from that designation change. Please consider not why this change would be beneficial to the development timeline, but if it would currently benefit Westminster residents in the area. A yes vote with the understanding that only commercial, new commercial retail is going in on the west side of Federal means they're saying it's acceptable for us on the east side to cross a busy US highway to patronize local businesses. A yes vote turns Highway 287 essentially into a wealth gap where people who can afford three-quarter million dollar homes get that vibrant, walkable experience and get to walk to those local businesses without having to cross an extremely busy highway and those of us that can't afford such on the other side. Summit Square and its businesses will not help make for a viable retail resource for a development of this size, making the current designated land use in the best interests of Westminster residents right now. Refusing the opportunity for this needed commercial space means Westminster will continue to lose current and future tax dollars to Federal Heights, which I can attest to because Federal Heights offers better and more convenient opportunities for us in this part of town. So I just ask to really think about and maybe postpone such a decision before you really get to see Uplands as a whole. Approving this change is like punting on first down or like folding before looking at the cards. So I feel like it's not in the best planning, especially before the Uplands Group provides a true picture of their commercial opportunities on the west side of Federal. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer.
Thank you. I would like to echo everything the prior speaker just said. Now, let's call into question in this hearing tonight, under Title 11, the land development growth procedures. Several things. Most specifically, number four, notice shall be published in the city official newspaper. It was published on March 21st for March 31st meeting. Was not published for tonight's meeting. They had time to put it in the newspaper for tonight's meeting. So therefore, it does not meet 513, excuse me, 11-513-4. Additionally, it doesn't pass under 11-513-6 that all neighbors were to be notified. Again, notice were sent out March 21st for a March 31st meeting, not for April 14th meeting. So there was no notification on either of those per our city code that you all should be adhering to and making sure that things are done by code. There's no mention in here of except for, or when rescheduled, or there's an exception for Uplands. The code is what the code is. Again, I ask you to look at it, 11-513, specifically Section 4 and Section 6. Now, look at Section 3, and it says that it needs to be noticed on the property. It was originally, and after they rescheduled, the Uplands people went out there and changed the date on all of those signs. So how is it we can do it for one thing, but not 4 or 6? Therefore, again, I'm questioning the legitimacy and the legality of this hearing going on tonight not being properly noticed in the paper or to the public as required by code. I hope you look at this and take it sincerely, because this is a violation of city code. Does not live up to what the code says. Things that were published for a March 21st hearing, excuse me, published on the 21st for a 31st hearing, not for an April 14th hearing. There was no notification given. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff or applicant? Mayor Protim?
Yeah, I was just wondering if staff could comment on the notifications completed for this hearing.
With council's permission, I'd like to refer that question to Mr. Frankel.
Thanks, Mr. McConnell. Yes, Mayor Protim, by convening the hearing on the night that it was agendized, which was the 31st of March, and continuing the hearing to a date certain, actual notice was provided to all in attendance, all that were watching online and all who subsequently watched the video online, that tonight would be the night, April 14th, would be the night that this item was considered. So in my opinion, it has been properly noticed.
Any other questions? Seeing, Councillor Carmelia?
Sorry, I'm trying to get my question clear before I, but I'm trying to figure out how to address our residents' concerns. Here, trying to think fast here, on my feet. Okay, so is there any high-level summary, I suppose, that we could get at this time from you, the developer, about what that complex might look like? And then as a follow-up, I think we've talked many times about what that crossing might look like, but to our city staff, can we guarantee safe, are we, what are some of our ideas for the increased travel that is going to be happening by foot across that highway?
Just a couple of quick answers. The first thing I'd like to say, and thank you very much for your notice discussion. You all are great. We actually postponed a hearing when we had made a mistake. I also would say the city advised correctly and said, go ahead on the signs and post a new hearing date. So we took a step that is not required at all to provide that notice. We think that's really important. Councillor, I think for your question about that passage, first of all, I would say that supporting retail and neighborhood-scale retail in Summit Square is absolute a requirement and something that we are doing, and that's a two-block walk south or Prospectors Point actually is adjacent to Summit Square, right? As it goes all the way south. So that absolutely should have neighborhood-scale retail, and we want that all to work. Then secondly, crossing at 86, as you know, building a new light there, a full movement intersection there to have safe passage, it's so important for Crown Point as well, but showing that. Then I think to your question about how do we envision that? We're talking with a number of retailers, all scale and size, about a true mixed-use, right? Standalone restaurants, more of those gathering places, the standalone uses there. So that's a little bit about what we're envisioning. I think we can talk a little bit about just the legs of that. This shows again, the, both sides of Federal are now lined with the 10-foot multi-use trail and the 8-foot on the east side, and then you see the 6-foot trail that comes into the new light on the north and south side there of Crown Point Academy. So again, full intersection, that shows the crosswalks, two crosswalks, actually all four at that intersection. So really making that a node. And as you can see, the gathering place for the Town Center, it is to pull everyone into the view corridor, see the parks that overlooks that. That is supposed to be the gathering place of Uplands, and that's how we've designed it. So we think that's an important part of that for all neighborhoods around there, including on the east side of Federal.
Councillor Demont?
I'm trying to make a motion.
Okay. Seeing no more comments, Councillor Demont? Oh, wait, it is 9:53, and I close the public hearing.
I just had one extra question for staff.
Okay.
And it's not beyond the answer right now. It's more of a request. If we could look at just Federal Boulevard, particularly between 84th and 88th for just the speeds, because right now I think it's at 45 miles per hour, and I'd love for us to be working with CDOT to address the speeds there and see if we can get that reduced. That's all. Thank you.
It's 9:54, and I close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councillor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Council Bill Number 7 on first reading to approve the comprehensive plan amendment for Uplands filing 3, Block 1, Track A, and Block 3. That's it.
Councillor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councillor's Bill Number 7. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Demont?
I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments about why I would support this. I understand the concerns about the retail and the crossing. Reality is, this is actually going to make it safer ultimately for us to cross Federal, as just mentioned. The other thing that I would mention is, empty retail doesn't bring us any tax revenue. And that area has suffered, not just for rooftops, there's also some other things that we have to deal with. There was a Walmart that was up the street, as well as some other things that were there, Safeway that was up the street, there used to be a Safeway where the Indian market is. You know, there's a lot of other impacting things that, you know, we as a city should address, crime being one of them. But I also do think that the more rooftops are going to help the viability of the retail there. And one of the concerns I always have in any development where we have the mixed use is that we're adding commercial space or retail space where we already have a lot of empty space in the city. So I think we've started balancing that out as a city, and so that's part of the reason that I will be supporting this, is because I think this helps the right-size balancing that we need in order to get retail, to get the tax revenue that we need to fuel the things we do as a city.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Demont?
Yes.
Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nirmella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
No.
And Councillor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Councillor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the preliminary development plan amendment for Uplands filing 3, Block 1, Track A, and Block 3.
Councillor Azadi?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the preliminary development plan amendment for Uplands filing 3, Block 1, Track A, and Block 3. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councillor Azadi?
Yes.
Councillor Hott?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Nirmella?
Yes.
Councillor Ireland?
No.
And Councillor Demont?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Me too.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Carmelia.
Yes.
That brings us to public hearing and first reading of Councillor's Bill Number 10 regarding the cleanup amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. It is 9:56, and I will open the public hearing. Staff, oh, good evening.
All right, just got to get that teed up in the right place. Good evening, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protim Nirmella, city councillors, Andrew Spurgeon, Long Range Planner. Nice to be back for tonight. I'm here tonight to present some proposed minor amendments to our comprehensive plan and request that you hold a public hearing to consider adopting those amendments. The agenda memo and attachments are entered into the public record, and public notice has been done in accordance with municipal code. The 2040 Comprehensive Plan was adopted by City Council on March 27th, 2023, so we're coming up on a little over two years. And until the item that you just took action on, there had been no amendments to that plan during these first two years. However, as staff has used the plan over these first two years, we have started to see some minor things that would be nice to clean up, some minor corrections, making sure we're aligning with our current business practices and reflect actions that City Council has taken separately relative to annexations that have changed the city boundaries. Chapter 1 of the plan describes how it is intended to be a living document that grows and changes with the community, and Chapter 9 identifies how the document will be updated periodically. These cleanup amendments are intended, sorry. These cleanup amendments are intended to be minor in nature to facilitate interpretation of the document. The more substantive amendments we would propose be handled in a separate process with more council discussion, more public involvement and so forth. So this is really, doesn't meant for these minor operational items. There's sort of two main key topic areas that are addressed with these amendments. The first of those is relative to senior housing, which is an issue identified in the Housing Needs Assessment that you were presented last year. We have an existing policy in the Comprehensive Plan that encourages locating senior housing within residential areas to provide proximity to generations to support seniors and at locations close to senior services, medical facilities, and public facilities such as libraries. Tonight's proposed text amendment would improve alignment between that policy and the land use element of the plan. These changes would not actually change the land use map. We're not physically remapping any properties. This is just changing the text in the document to provide guidance at such time a senior housing application may be brought in for consideration. The other main category of amendments is with parks and open space, specifically to reflect the annexations that City Council approved for five separate properties a few years ago. Some of the other minor amendments included, again, are updating all of the maps to reflect those revised city boundaries, reflecting the annexations that you've already approved, adding or updating definitions, ensuring that the land uses described with the land use categories align with the terms we use in the plan glossary to facilitate interpretation, and also some minor corrections to cross-references and spelling. So staff recommendation is that you hold a public hearing, and upon conclusion of the hearing, that you would approve an ordinance adopting the amendments presented tonight. The Planning Commission did consider these amendments and recommended them unanimously in a 7-0 vote. The city's strategic plan is supported both with access to opportunity The city's strategic plan is supported both with access to opportunity and economic vitality. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public testimony? We do. The first speaker is Aaron Burner. Welcome.
Apologies. My comments were only meant for the previous hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer.
I didn't sign up.
Okay. Okay, we have no speakers. Perfect. Do we have any other questions of staff? Counselor Ireland?
Were these changes for the senior wording, was the Erickson development the criteria for this?
No, that was not a factor. I haven't been involved with that since I brought the actual comprehensive plan to you for adoption two years ago. I haven't been part of Erickson discussions since that time. I don't think any of these changes would impact what they're doing. They're not precluded by the language that's being updated with this amendment.
Okay. I just want to make sure that is not part of the deal. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Carmelia?
Just for my awareness, is this a regular, is this every two-year schedule, or we just happen to do this, or what is our process?
Well, it's, that's a good question, Counselor. This is intended to become a regular two-year process. This is the first time we've ever done it. We're just now at two years from when we adopted the comprehensive plan. But the idea is that we would periodically come back before you if needed, maybe more than every two years, to keep this plan fresh and usable and relevant to our needs as a city.
Well, I approve, so thank you. Seeing no other discussion, it is 10:03. I will close the public discussion, or public hearing. And is there anything else for discussion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 10 on first reading to approve amendments to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 10. Roll call, please. Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
That brings us to new business, adopt resolution number 5. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 5, confirming Ezekiel Vasquez to the position of Finance Director and Chief Financial Officer of the City of Westminster.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 5. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, Counselor Carmelia? Congratulations. Well done. Roll call, please. Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Counselor Ha?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Welcome to Westminster. That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 11. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 11 on first reading authorizing a supplemental appropriate aid from the Westminster Economic Development Authority in the amount of $250,000 to the 2025 General Capital Improvement Fund for the North Huron Urban Renewal and Area Fire Station project.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 11. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
I think residents were asked to get creative at our budget town hall recently in those workshop sessions we held in those roundtables, and I think that this move right here is proof that it worked, and it is working. So congratulations to residents and to council for getting creative with how we use our funds.
Roll call, or, I'm sorry, motion? Counselor Demont?
I actually wanted to give a shout-out to Jody for this. So the prior path that we were trying to do with fire was before Jody took the helm back, and I know when you were the intern before, you came up with creative solutions for us to fund things that we needed to do. So I'm glad, as you've taken this as a permanent role, that you continue to do that, and I anticipate that we'll continue to see that move for the city and our tax dollars wisely be spent and us not unnecessarily go after taxes where we have money available.
Roll call, please. Mayor Protem Nirmella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. That brings us to Counselors' Bill Number 9. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 9 on second reading authorizing the city manager to execute a development assistance agreement with the Adams County Housing Authority, doing business as Maker Housing Partners, authorizing 100% rebates of permit fees, park development fees, and sales and use tax to the city, but specifically excluding from any rebate the 0.25% portion of open space tax, the 0.60% public safety tax on construction materials, and the amount not to exceed $555,751, in addition to the allocation of $1,071,489 in the Home Investment Partnership Program funds, for a total assistance package not to exceed $1,627,240 for the development of 70-unit affordable family, multifamily development and Head Start classroom located within the Uplands.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill Number 9. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Ireland?
No.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Ha?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Nirmella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote. Before I close this meeting, do we have reason for executive session tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there are two on tonight's agenda that would be part of our post-meeting following the WEDA agenda. And the first of the two executive sessions is to consult with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice related to potential coordinated actions in response to State of Colorado House Bill 241304, House Bill 241313, and House Bill 241152. These discussions would be held pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute 246402-4B and Section 111(c)(3) of the Westminster Municipal Code.
I will ask council to state your name and if you're willing to go into executive session.
Obie Zada, yes?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nirmella, yes.
Amber Ha, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
It is 10:09, and I will close this meeting.
Actually, Mayor, if I could, there is a second executive session agendized for the post-meeting tonight, and that is an executive session discussion of a personnel matter, council's quarterly check-in with the city attorney. That could be conducted pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code, Section 111(c)(1), and Colorado Revised Statute 246402-4F.
Same, ask each counselor to name, or say your name, and you're willing to go into executive session?
Obie Zada, yes?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Dave Demont, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nirmella, yes.
Amber Ha, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
It is 10:09, and I close the regular meeting. That brings us to the Westminster Economic Development Meeting, incorporating the roll call from the past meeting. And we have a motion for minutes of December 16. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2025 Westminster Economic Development meeting as presented.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 16, 2025. 2025? That should be 2024. Thank you. December 16, 2024. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demont?
Do we need to officially amend that, or is that?
Yeah, if we could.
I will amend that to 2024.
Okay. So this motion is to approve the minutes of December 16, 2024 instead of 25. Mayor Protem, do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Seeing no further discussion, roll call, or all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to a public hearing and resolution number 239 regarding supplemental appropriation to the 2025 Westminster Economic Development Authority budget to reimburse costs to the General Capital Improvement Fund associated with the improvements in the North Huron Urban Renewal area. I will, it's 10:11, I will open the public meeting or hearing. Do we have anything from staff? No. Okay. Do we have any public? There's no public sign. Okay. It is 10:11. I will close the public hearing, and do we have a motion? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to adopt resolution number 239 authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the 2025 Westminster Economic Development Authority budget in the amount of $250,000 for the owner's representative service related to the potential fire station in the North Huron Urban Renewal area.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 239. Roll call, please. Board Member Carmelia?
Yes.
Board Member Demont?
Yes.
Board Member Azadi?
Yes.
Board Member Ha?
Yes.
Chairperson McNally?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Nirmella?
Yes.
And Board Member Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. It is 10:12, and I close the Westminster Economic Development Meeting, and we go into post-meeting.
You get fired.
Yeah. Yeah.